All right, thank you, Mayor, members of council and our guests. This this evening is a work session, it's somewhat of a capstone conversation for a project that was picked up in early 2022. In early 2022, actually, when my predecessor Jasper was still here, he issued an RFP or request for proposal, looking for firms that could help the city and had a conversation around the future of its recreation facilities. The hallmark course of our recreation facility is being a community center. And throughout last spring, we had some conversations kind of fine tuning what the request was. We received a proposal from Boltman Bank, clarified a little bit what the city's ask was in that proposal with with Boltman Bank, and then looked to city council for funding to complete a master plan for the recreation facilities. Received that that funding from city council, and so we began the process, partnering with Boltman Bank. Boltman Bank brought on board JLG Architects and Ballard &amp; King, two firms that are well versed in the type this type of work, looking at community facilities, recreation facilities, how they operate, where they operate, what works well, what doesn't work well. And then began to really dig into our our facilities here and looked at them operationally, looked at them functionally, looked at the capital planning that goes into the community center in particular, and then began a series of community engagement. So one thing we recognized at the staff level early on is that staff, we're not going to create a long term master plan for the community center in a vacuum, that this is a center of by and for the community. And so one thing that was critically important was engaging community, both users and non-users of the community center, and looking at the future of this building, what it offers, what it should offer, what it how much it costs to offer, what the community could like. So that involved a community survey, which we'll share the results of that in a bit here. And and also some targeted community engagement sessions with key stakeholder groups, including the school district, the youth hockey association, the baseball association, the basketball association, the volleyball association, the wrestling association. And then also involving the mayor's community center task force, which I first convened back in, I believe, in 2021, which is a group of community members and stakeholders interested in the future of of the community center. So we were able to accumulate a large body, I think, good representation of what the community feels about the community center, what they would like to see going forward. With that goal of presenting some options to city council of directions the council could go with the community center, what those options might cost the community, what benefits the community and the city might see from an augmentation to the community center. One thing that at staff level, we've stressed, I would say, to the consultant team, has been that the do nothing option is not an option. That, you know, the last few years during COVID and now coming out of the pandemic, you know, we've seen the closure of the indoor control. We have added the golf simulator, which has had, you know, we've seen a lot of success with that since that was brought on board recently. But as we look 20 years down the road, we recognize that from a facility standpoint, doing nothing is is it is not an option that we, the staff, would recommend at this point. So where do we go from here? And again, this is kind of the capstone presentation tonight. I'm going to turn the mic over to Corey Beanfang, who serves as a city engineer, but has been the coordinator of this effort here on behalf of Boltman Bank. Mark Wenzel with JLG Architects is joining us tonight. Jeff King with Ballard &amp; King has been a point person on operations. And he's joining us remotely. And so I'll let them walk through the presentation, some different options that are from the city council. The key with any work session, and this is not unique to tonight, is that there's no action that comes out of tonight. There's no recommendation, there's no vote, no motion that we're looking for from city council. This is just the first opportunity for council and the public to see what options for the future of the community center have been generated and begin that conversation. We will begin the budgeting process as we move forward here, but I wouldn't, I would not be surprised if one of the things that we look to after tonight would be potentially another work session with city council to dive deeper into these options, what the financial options for these might look like as we get into the budget session. So this is, we'll have a little presentation, then time for council to to ask questions and no action. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to Corey or Mark just to kick out the presentation here. I'll flip through the slides, so Mark, you just give me the high sign when you want.
Good evening, thank you for having me here tonight. I think Joe outlined things pretty well. You have a facility, you know, we really focused on the community center, and you have a facility that people in town, I think, agreeably appreciate that you have it, but pretty much agree that it's not the greatest facility and that they could expect to have. But they're very respectful of the efforts that the city is putting out towards recreation in the in the community. I think they appreciate the efforts that are being made, even with a facility that has its own list of issues and things like that. So also, the people we met with were generally a very agreeable group of folks who work with, was very low demanding community. We meet with a lot of groups and a lot of communities, and sometimes we hear a lot of wrangling and arguing who's the most important. I would say your community really stood out to me as one of the more polite communities I've I've worked with in my 30 years of doing this. So anyway, we'll get into the presentation, you can maybe flip to the next slide. So anyway, the study objective was really to evaluate the current status of health, wellness, and recreation services in the community. And I see I misspelled, it's pretty, pretty bad dispelling right there. And and see what those services are like and what's performing well. And then because it's heavily focused on the community center to assess its condition and how it's working. Apologize for that. Joe mentioned we met with a lot of groups of people, that's some of the list of folks we've met with. We gave everybody like an hour to give us their insights into what, how their programs, organizations, and things are working, what facilities they felt worked for them, and what facilities they felt were disappointing, things they needed more use for. This is that, again, unusual in a community like this, that, you know, the basketball association does the heavy lifting for basketball. Volleyball association does the heavy lifting for volleyball. But again, I thought we, what we heard here was people were pretty agreeable about sharing here. So the next slide. We also conducted a citywide survey. Boltman Bank really led that effort with city staff. They sent it out to 1,603 households and got 433 responses back. That's really a high return rate. We see many communities that don't come anywhere near that. Again, it sort of supports the idea that people in the community really take an interest in what goes on in the sewer. And the, you know, some of the comments included about how much people come to the facility, what activities they appreciated, and and some of the improvements they thought. It's a very thick document with lots of data. We've included in the report, you can go through it sometime. And if you have questions about some of the responses, we can do that. But we could spend 20 minutes, half an hour, just talking about the survey. But it was a good way to get information from the community and let people know that we were listening to them and what their feelings were. So the then, we think this is one of the most important things to do, and that is to spend time with staff and get their input. You know, Rich and Allison and folks work with the people in the community every day. They hear their thoughts and opinions every day. They're the ones who try to make things work. Sometimes here was, I guess, a duct tape wire and and bubble gum at the facility. And so we really think that's important, their input. We took, a lot of this included, and Jeff could talk about this a little bit more when he gets up to speak. But what what operations are happening currently? We know the pool had to close, they added the golf simulator, as you heard. But they also talked about what they're trying to do with the other spaces in the building and getting the most use out of it they can. We discussed the limitations of the existing building, and it has very severe limitations, starting right with the front door and all the way through the facility. So it's a difficult building to make programming work. I think it's a difficult building to make people feel welcome and excited about coming to because of its age and some of its condition. And so it tends to turn people off of it. And then, of course, the pool is really a problem. And we discussed at length, the pool, correcting the pool, correcting the existing pool is not a viable option for you. It's going to be very expensive to do, and you still end up with a pool that probably doesn't perform really well. So our recommendation right now is not to not to try to rescue it. That means either you go without a pool or you build a new one. But so next, so we have three, I'm sorry, we have sort of two and a half recommendations to make here, or three recommendations to make to you. The options we do, we did for you are two parts. We have project costs. So that is the cost of doing the initial construction improvements or replacement of the facility, project cost that you would do one time, and then annual operating costs. And annual operating costs, of course, is a differential always between what you receive in revenues and what you spend in expenses. So those, you're going to have that for for all the options. So next slide. So option one is to remodel the existing community center. So we're going to try to use the existing building to any extent we can. Now, the hockey arena portion of the building is in pretty good shape. You spent some money already keeping it up to date. Yes, hockey people will tell you there's more things that need to be done. There's, I think that's a, like, you know, a constant refrain, and we don't, we don't really mind that the hockey associations are always that way because they're trying to make the best program they can. But frankly, that's the best asset to the building is the hockey arena. So we are really trying to say that that stays intact. If you were to do some work on the building, you probably would look at some of minor things in the hockey arena that you might do. And then, of course, as I mentioned, the limitations due to the existing building. Any renovation of that building is going to be, you know, bring it back to bare bones and kind of start over because most of the things need to be improved. So next slide. So this is, that's just the site plan, you know this building better than I do. What we included in the scope of work, that you're going to see numbers on, is renovating this portion of the building that's highlighted in white and improving the parking lot. Not building a new parking lot, but improving the parking lot you have because it's in pretty bad shape. So that's what's included in the cost. Next slide, Joe, so. This shows the floor plans under the renovated scheme. So we basically reworked the whole building. We keep the major north-south walls, the walls that align along the pool that would stay intact, that vessel, that, I'm sorry, that room would stay intact. And then the rooms on the west side of that, the basic bearing walls would stay intact. And then most of the rest gets gutted and redone in some way. A couple of major things we want to do in this is to eliminate the pool and put the gymnasium in the pool because the existing gym, as you might know, is too small. It's not a regulation court, and the just, and the areas around the court are too tight. It's really not a very good situation. So this would give you a regulation basketball court. We also show the dotted line you see around that court is the potential to put a walking track above the basketball court. It wouldn't be a real big walking track, it'd be a walking track that's elevated. It makes for safe walking because you can walk on the track without getting hit by somebody playing basketball or other sports. And of course, that basketball court is only the determination of the size of it. It would be volleyball, pickleball, you name it in there. We just used the basketball court to show you. There would, we would keep one racquetball court. We would redo the lobby and make it more welcoming and a little more open. We widen up the hallway, make it work a little better. We also add, just in the layout of the room, we added, to be able to add a couple of team rooms. So choose sports, whoever might be in there could gather, gather a team together before playing. And then locker rooms and administrative offices and the golf simulator stays. On the second floor, we worked the second floor, so now it's open to the gym below. So it's not so tight and confining up there. We get more daylight in, there's more openness to the gym below. So the actual places that you're working out on machines, you can imagine stair trainers and things like that would be lined up along the wall to look down over the gym. And there would be a place for cardio weights and then some classroom space. And all of these things are suggestive of what might be. It's not really meant to be the design of the facility. It just gives you an indication of how it could be a little more welcoming, work a little better, and of course, be up to date with all the facilities in it. So if we give to the next one, this is what it's going to cost. So option one, project costs are, the basic construction cost is a little hard to read, the number is $7,150,000. We add a contingency to that of about $1 million. That's to protect you from cost overruns and things we don't don't yet know. And then, of course, because you're not building it today, we put in an escalation to fall of next year. So you might, if you decide to go ahead, you talk about the summer, and you think you might go ahead this fall, by next fall, you might start construction. Then, so that's a total cost, construction cost of 9.2 million. Then there are soft costs, and if you're not familiar with the term soft cost, that's all the things that aren't attached to the building, chairs, furniture, fitness equipment, things like that. Also fees to pay architects and engineers, surveyors, and people like that that needed to do the project. So to renovate the existing building in the, in the building that's there, the total project cost would be about $11 million and change. Now, I'm going to stop here and let Jeff take over and talk about the annual cost for operating the facility. He can give you some background of what that's all about. So it's all yours, Jeff.
Thanks, Mark. I just wanted to touch base on this whole process that we went through and in terms of identifying the operating costs and revenues. It was a very transparent process, and we did this very much arm-in-arm with Joe and and Richard and Allison. They had a great deal of input in this process, which we always appreciate. It's nice to be able to have a client that's as engaged and knowledgeable as what you have in the sewer. So when you look at the expenses and and you will, there will be report, the the report will have all kinds of details in it. But for the sake of our discussion, I just wanted you to know that we did focus on staffing costs because clearly that's usually the biggest cost associated with running these facilities. They're very staff-heavy. So we talked about some of the full-time needs. We talked about the part-time needs. We went over potential scheduling of part-time staff, what the benefit package was. And that was all part of an overall line item budget that we developed. We also included in that line item listing, we do have a listing for capital replacement. It has a great deal of discussion in regards to being proactive with the capital needs of this facility as you project out five to 10 years. And then lastly, you know, we looked at all the revenue sources and tried to understand the impact of it. We were conservative with these. They're certainly not pie in the sky and very conservative. So as a result of these processes, for this particular option, we're looking at additional expenses of about $250,000, new revenues of about $131,000. So there is a difference of about $118,905.
Okay, then we can go to the next one. So option one A is everything I just talked about with one addition, and that is replacing the pool and adding a play space. So it's the plan that you just saw plus a couple of things. So if we go to the next slide, this is the site plan. So now you see there's an addition to the building to the south, and we've expanded the parking area because this is a building with a larger footprint. We expect more activity, more people coming to the building. And so we've expanded the parking as part of this option. It seems to be appropriate to be to do that. Also, I should also note that these two options, of course, keep the ball field intact. We didn't budget for improvements to the ball field in either of these, it stays as it is. So next slide. So this is a close-up, I hope you can see this well enough. So the plan that you just saw with the gym and the existing pool space and the rest of the layout. And then what we do is we make a new space at the front of the building for a swimming pool. Now, we've discussed at length the issue of a swimming pool. There's a strong, but maybe small contingent of people, particularly seniors who exercise in the pool, they take classes in the pool, and and they really feel it's a very important part for them. We know the existing pool is designed in such a way, it's very deep, it's very large, it's an odd size, and it doesn't serve a lot of other people well because of its of its great depth. So the pool we're proposing is a regulation length pool. So anybody who's a lap swimmer, it would be regulation length for them. It would be four lanes, so four people could swim at a time. It would be typically three and a half to four feet deep. So it's this deep. It's deep enough so people can take a water aerobics class in it, but it's shallow enough so people can, most people can stand up in the pool, which we think is particularly important for getting Saturday after, winter Saturday afternoons and Sunday afternoons to get kids in the pool to use the pool because that's a revenue stream for you to get that activity. We want to make the pool be used as many hours of the day as possible so that the expense of owning it gets covered by the expense, by the revenue of people paying to use it. So that's an important, really important part. We also add an indoor play space. This is a climbing apparatus for the littlest kids to use. We think now we have something that combines the other activities in the building with more youth-focused activities, particularly during the winter, so that kids could come for birthday parties or just, you know, give mom a break and come in and and play in the facility. With the pool comes additional locker rooms, which you see behind it. But it would become a new, brighter, more welcoming pool, and hopefully get a lot more use. But with pools comes the expenses. So next slide. So here's the project cost for option one A, and that is the construction cost of $12.25 million, a contingency of $1.9 million, the escalator to fall of 2024 of $1.5 million, so a total construction cost of $15.99 million, plus soft costs. We just generally budget soft costs at 20% of the construction cost, so it's $3 million. And then a total project cost of $18,900,000. And now again, I'll turn it over to Jeff for the annual operating.
Yeah, I wanted to say a couple of things real quick. Mark, on this slide, we have the title revenue and expenses in the wrong place, so expenses should be first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry.
You're essentially between a rock and a hard spot with the with the pool. Obviously, you you, there was tremendous interest shown for the aquatic component with the survey. And you have a lot of people in the community disappointed that the pool didn't open after the the pandemic. But clearly, you're seeing the cost implication of that, not only from the cost of construction, but also the ongoing and significant cost to operate. And that's against the backdrop, and and Richard and Allison shared a lot of this, that even prior to COVID, the use and demand for the pool was was not very high. But nonetheless, the community is interested in the pool. There's certainly a synergy that can be gained from having an aquatic component. And what I mean by that is a certain percentage of swimmers will also play basketball or volleyball or lift weights and vice versa. So the more of these components that you can stack and include into one facility has a tendency to build more participation, more interest, and ultimately more revenues. But with this particular option, you're seeing a revenue to expense difference of $542,000. One last comment, the the reality is pools are very expensive to operate, and essentially the systems have to run 24/7 by code. So I I like to joke that sucking sound that you hear is money going down the main drain.
Option two. So this is, let's start over. Let's take, keep the hockey arena intact. It seems to be fine serving its purpose, but let's construct a new building to the south half of the site and include the options you just saw in one A, a new pool and new play area. So this gives us, well, several things. One, starting over, you get to get exactly what you want, not to live with the consequences of the existing building. But maybe more importantly is all the unknowns about remodeling the existing building go away. We live with a lot of uncertainty when we gave you those cost numbers about remodeling the existing building because we opened up a wall, we don't know what we'll find, things like that. So we had to be, you know, a little careful about giving you an estimate on that. But with a new building, things go easier and there's less risk. So let's look at the plans, Joe. So this one, because we're starting over, we could correct some things in the layout that makes this much easier. Now, we took a liberty here and said, when we start over, let's take out the ball field. We could build a new facility and keep the ball field. It'll fit on the site, just as you saw in one A, it's got the same components. But we said, what happens if we design this thing from scratch and we say the ball field's going to be relocated? So that's what you see here. So we have a new parking lot with now really two entrances to the building. We get a hockey entrance up at the north end of the new park and a everyday user's entrance to the south of the building on that site plan. That's going to make getting to a hockey game easier than going all the way through the building from that south parking lot that has a problem today. Next slide, Joe. So these are the plans. It's the same components essentially that was in the last two I talked to you about. But we get to shape things a little better, organize things as they work a little better, and and all that. And the first thing I want to talk about, because I just mentioned, is the entrances now. We don't have every kid with a hockey bag, but anybody else that wants to come into the facility. So as you come in the south doors, there would be a lobby space, a check-in desk that's appropriate for the crowds that are coming in, so you can collect fees, et cetera. Then the play space and the pool, again, kind of the signature of the facility, glass wall looking into the pool. Everybody loves to look at at the pool. And then a new full-size gymnasium with a regulation basketball court. Now, that would hold a couple of cross courts that you could play a short game on or just shoot baskets at. You know, and so you really could have a place for a lot of people to sort of go out there and, you know, shoot hoops, not just a single game of basketball. And again, it would hold, you know, three to four pickleball courts and and a couple of volleyball courts at the same time. Then, of course, there's a set of lockers. We would have new lock- Then, of course, there's a set of lockers. We would have new lockers. Lockers today are more complicated than they used to be. We have more family lockers or individual lockers, changing spaces. So we can accommodate people with a variety of different needs and privacy and, you know, mom helping their sons, fathers helping their daughters, seniors helping each other, et cetera. So we'd have that kind of setup with pools. We'd also have a concourse sort of between the hockey arena and the rest of the facility. It's like a concourse there. We don't really have this idea designed, but you know, the upper concourse at the back of the bleachers would connect to this. There would be a place where people could gather during breaks in the hockey game with a concession stand. And of course, we also kept a racquetball court. On the second floor, we have a open plan with the treadmills, stair climbers, et cetera. Again, looking down over the pool or looking down over the gym, walking track around the gym, a couple of fitness exercise classrooms and that concourse we've talked about. We'd have to have some control features to separate, you know, when people come to hockey game, they can't go overwind of the building and vice versa. But we think it'd be a way to make a connection to them. So let's go to the costs. So we've been a little more ambitious here, so of course the costs are going to get higher with the new building and replacement of the ball field. So, construction of new building is roughly eighteen million dollars. Site work here is seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We've added the site work component because we're completely rebuilding the parking lot and redoing the work in the site. We have a cost for replacing the existing baseball field of one point two million dollars. That says wherever you find a place to put it, it's going to cost you one point two million dollars to put it there. Then we have a project contingency now of three million dollars. An escalation, as I mentioned before, to twenty twenty four of two point four million dollars. So a total construction cost of twenty-five million dollars. We had the soft cost of four million dollars. Total project cost of twenty-nine million three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So that's the capital investment you'd be making to do this facility. Let's see, I think I got the numbers right this time, Jeff. Go ahead.
Yeah, and expenses would be similar to what the previous option was. Revenues will go up a bit with this option, but still looking at a difference of a little, slightly over half million dollars.
I think that. Let's go to the next slide. What did you get here?
Mark, I think we kind of covered this on the intro, but it just regurgitates what we already said in terms of how we built the operational plan, so I think you can move forward.
Do you want to go through this expense summary or the other ones? We kind of covered, this shows you the parts and pieces if they're interested, I guess.
Yeah, this just, we just wanted to illustrate the expense summary and revenue summary, how we did the three different options and put them side by side so that you could see them and had a full listing of all the line item expenses. So we wanted to be transparent. And again, you could see at the bottom, we have a capital replacement fund. And we did something similar on the next slide with the revenue summary. Very much the same way, we identified the revenue sources with the three options going across the top from the fees and admissions to the programming and some of the other items. So we just wanted to give the mayor and council a sense for the process they went through and get a chance to see some of this. You'll have a lot, you'll have the opportunity to see a lot more detail as these reports start coming your way.
So that pretty much finishes the presentation. Open to questions? We went through this quickly, kind of gave you the highlights, but if I can answer questions, then Jeff and I would be glad to do that. So.
Can I ask one quick question, if that's all right? Sorry to preempt the council members, but one thing that we talked a bit about that I suspect will be a question at some point, I'm just going to go back here to option two. You made a lot of conversation with the hockey association about ice time and the desire for additional ice time. And what would it look like to add a second rink, a full rink or a committee rink or a private rink? And Mark and Jeff, if you could speak just a little bit to, this option two here leaves, assumes removing Bruce Frankfield, right, and leaves some space here that at some point in the future, if we wanted to add a second rink, could could you share your thoughts on the capital investment to put a second rink in?
So we didn't explore the option of adding a second rink in any detail. Adding a second rink to this building because of the shape of the roof adds some complication physically because you have that ballroom roof and we can't pile snow on it. So we didn't go into a depth. What I can give you is the basic, what we're telling any city if they ask us what a new hockey rink costs. So we're saying today, if a city wants to build a new hockey rink, basically like you have, maybe not with that many seats, starts at about eight million dollars, construction cost. And something that usually starts to be equipped with team rooms and maybe some workout space and some other things you want, they start to approach ten million dollars in construction cost. Adding twenty percent to that, so we're really talking about a ten to twelve million dollar project cost for a new machine of ice in the facility. It's a big number and it's really the starting point for a new hockey sheet. So with the condition of the facility you have and the ice time conditions you have, we didn't see that being something that would go very far, but I know people ask about it, they're interested in knowing about it. So that's our sort of rule of thumb answer we can give you. And Jeff, maybe you probably didn't have a chance to do a lot of research on ice time here, but you could probably speak to that, too.
No, and unlike some of the other components that we presented tonight, a second sheet of ice actually has some positive attributes in the sense that operating a second sheet of ice at the same location will likely increase your expenses in the neighborhood of forty to forty-five percent. But the beauty is you now have the opportunity to double the amount of revenue that's collected from use of that. Now, we don't think, obviously, it would be, the programming would be planned out to full saturation the first year or two, but over time, it would build to the point where you now have two sheets of ice that are generating the same amount of revenue. That's a positive. So in terms of looking at the expense-revenue perspective on a second sheet of ice, it's going to be a positive cash flow.
Anybody have any questions?
I just was wondering about accessibility, the existing elevator remains. And any improvement in any of that, any of these plans?
It would have to be. Everything would have to be made completely ADA accessible first the second floor in any remodeling of this extent. So that would include restrooms and entrances and circulation to the second floor and all those things. So that would be an absolute requirement.
So we just talked about adding an elevator on the south half of the building so that those who want to get to the second floor don't have to trip along or bend to the building to get on the elevator. Yeah. Yes.
Joe, I don't know if you're the right person to ask this question to, but when we talk about the operating costs, set aside the construction costs, when they broke out the operating costs on here, is that essentially like replacing what we're currently paying for operating costs? Or is this in addition to what we're currently paying in operating costs?
This would be in addition to what our current operating costs are. You know, an additional revenue. That's correct, Jeff. Yes?
Correct.
So any gain or loss, as demonstrated here, isn't estimated, and that gain or loss?
I have a question, maybe more for you, Joe, and it might be jumping ahead a little bit, but, um, of course, I think I know the obvious answer. What type of finance mechanisms should we have? Is there any type of grants out there that we know because of some of this?
You know, there are. In any of these options, from an upfront standpoint, we would certainly look to federal and state sources. I mean, there are other recreation facilities who have been the beneficiaries of state and federal programs. And Lake Crystal is one. They got some state bonding money. Recently, they got some bonding money and then when they initially built, they received some bonding money to contribute to it. I can't speak to how much they received. But any amount that would not be from a capital upfront standpoint, any amount that would not be granted through a state or federal program, we either look to donations or city bonding, of course, with the repayment coming from dedicated revenues, which is somewhat challenging given the revenue projections here. But we would donate, excuse me, dedicate the revenues to pay the bond, which so the current roof bond back from twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen was revenue bonds and revenues from the community center dedicated to servicing the debt for the roof and associated construction costs that went into that bond. We would look at something similar here, though I don't know that the entirety of it would be able to be dedicated or paid for by the community center revenues. They're very important to everybody.
The roof bond, I want to get back to that. If we were to go with a project similar to one of these and we bond for it, is that roof bond something we could refinance?
We would look, we would look to, yeah, to refinance that or pay off or call those bonds and roll it into a, into new issuance. So we would definitely explore our options there.
And Mark, I was trolling pretty closely here, but I might have missed it. Either one of these options, do we change the roof at all with some of these schemes?
The new construction, the existing building, we would keep the whole trust roof. We're going to have to do some reinforcing and rebuilding of that thing a bit, but as the new construction is done, because we're going to be moving things around, but that would basically stay in that. We build a new building, we would do a more economical constructed roof of, you know, bar joists, if you know what that is, and a flat roof with that type of structure. You know, snow piling is always a tricky thing with additions and remodelings of buildings and new codes and all that. You went through that with the roof replacement, you did already with the reinforcement of the roof, so we'd have to be careful about that. It's an interesting roof layout.
Oh, what's the lifetime of the roof we have? Do you have any idea, Joe?
From an expectancy standpoint, the bond?
Well, no, I mean, how, what was the roof and what's the expectations of our warranty?
It was completed in twenty fourteen and I can't speak to the life expectancy of the roof, although it likely runs with the bond. Probably twenty years, that points at twenty years.
I would, most likely, you've got a twenty-year warranty of some kind on it. So if a typical municipal roof project with a twenty-five-year expectancy, you know, more than likely, so I would say twenty-five years is probably it's, and with life thirty, it's like that.
Mark, you've given us quite a bit to look at here and quite a bit to digest. I know there's been a lot of input and you guys have put together a lot of information. We really appreciate all the work you've put into this. Anybody else have any questions?
Just kind of curious, how long would this project take to do? And what impact would, if we, with option one or one A, what impact would we have on the existing ballpark? Is construction, can you get into the field, field going to be shut down at all?
That's a really good question. It's going to be cheaper if you let the contractor have the room he wants to do the work. That's always better. If the contractor has to work just from the other side of the ball field and isn't allowed on the ball field, he's going to find it more constraints and it's going to cost more to do it. Because most of the work is done inside the building and the basic exterior walls stay in place, that may not be a big issue here, but they're going to want some access to that ball field. Now, there is a bit of space between the actual field and it, enough that they can drive up some equipment through, but not a lot. So, but it is probably an issue. There is potential that the work would start in August and finish in May. So you may not lose the ball season, you know, have to fix it again in the spring. But it might not interfere a lot with the use of the field. You might still get your summer.
And one thing I want to add, we didn't talk a lot about, but it came up in the stakeholder session. And I do want to address it here because it also came up in, it's referenced in the post-plan, which is the current condition of Bruce Frankfield. And it's been a lot of baseball talk tonight, I know, but humor me for another ninety seconds. There are recognized problems with the turf and the grade at the Bruce Frankfield. And for several years now, on the, called the original CIP list, which is the list that staff initially brings to personnel budget that has a longer list of items that we know need to be addressed, but which hasn't been addressed yet, is the state of Bruce Frankfield. So the problems, the issues that we see with Bruce Frankfield, you know, the grading of the outfield, the infield lips, and then some, you know, probably improvements and efficiencies around lighting and seating that would be nice to do at the time. From a staff standpoint, I would like to recommend that should a project like this go forward, that city council consider bringing those improvements into the project so that we're improving the site all around. If we're going to address the parking issues, if we're going to, you know, work on the community center, then we would. I would like to see improvements made at Bruce Frankfield at the time. It's never been regraded since it was used as a football field for years and years. The baseball association and city staff work really well together to make it the quality that it is. But it needs a fair amount of love. I think it would be appropriate to do that at the time that we do a project like this.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Well, thank you for your attention and I appreciate it.
Gentlemen, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Anything else? I guess we have the fully booked. That's all.
So, Ms. Beane, thank you. Has some bound copies. For council members, we are going to make this available to the general public for their review. Again, there's no action tonight, but what I would like to do is, and maybe it's most appropriate to start with personnel budget, as we like at the budget season. And I do have this been having a budget work session with council late summer, early fall. Maybe it's just with the personnel budget, that we start to look at this and if the council would like to have a work session, devote it specifically to this, if you have a chance to review the survey results in the, in the circumstances of that. There's a lot to digest. The survey was, as Mark said, I was really thrilled with the response that we got from the survey from a response rate standpoint. A lot of insight to be gained there. It's pretty clear what the community wants. Less clear, as I expected, is in every community, how much we've got community to spend to get what the community wants. That's a tough question to answer, but that's what we wanted to share tonight. I appreciate very much Cory and Jeff and Mark. And Rich Nelson put in an incredible amount of time and effort into this, working with the consulting team and showing them around, gaining them data, explaining what we're trying to do, explaining what's the best and showing them around, getting them data, explaining what we're trying to do, explaining what has been successful. So I appreciate Rich Nelson, all the time they put in.
Thank you. Council, I want to thank you for your time tonight. I want to thank the staff for your time here tonight. We appreciate you being here. I just recommend that the council take the next several days, maybe or weeks or months, or whatever it takes, and review this study that you've been given and hopefully we can bring this all together again and we can have some more healthy discussion on this. Thank you.